Like to call the meeting to order at seven PM. I'd like to welcome everybody to Independent School District Thirteen's School Board Meeting for Tuesday, January twenty-seventh, two thousand and fifteen. And if you would, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Welcome, everybody. Lori, if you would, call the roll.
Nichols?
Here.
Palmer?
Here.
Larkin?
Here.
Landworth?
Here.
Lewis?
Here.
Meyer? Here.
Thank you. Mission Statement for District Thirteen. Columbia Heights Public Schools creates worlds of opportunity for every learner in partnership with supportive small-town communities by challenge all to discover their talents, unleash their potential, and develop tools for lifelong success. Our core values are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. For the agenda approval, adjustments, announcements, and correspondence, I would welcome a motion for approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Laura, second by Lori. Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Announcements, February tenth, at six PM, will be a school board professional development here in the community room. February tenth, Tuesday, at seven o'clock, regular school board meeting. February sixteenth, which is a Monday, there'll be no school. It's President's Day. The district will be closed. February seventeenth, it's Tuesday, at five-thirty, there will be a school board listening session. On February seventeenth, Tuesday, six PM, there'll be a school board work session. And on February twenty-fourth, which is also a Tuesday, seven PM, regularly scheduled school board meeting. Correspondence, Superintendent Kelly?
Mr. Chair, members, there's no correspondence.
Okay, thank you. As far as communication to the board, at this time, any citizen or employee may briefly address the school board. The board will listen to brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if desired, request that administration follow-up. The board will not take action at this meeting on requests presented at this time. Is there anyone here that would like to address the board? I'm gonna go with no. Okay. Moving on for the consent agenda, I've been looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda. It includes the personnel report tonight.
I'll move that forward. Second.
Motion by Lori, second by Laura. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next would be acknowledgements of contributions, and there's a resolution to read, and I'd like to ask for a motion and second to move it forward prior to reading the resolution. Can I get a motion for that?
So moved.
Motion by Ted.
Second.
Second by Lori. Any discussion? All in favor? Why don't we begin to do a roll call at the end, so I can just move it forward from here? Okay, so we have acknowledgement of contributions, the resolution. Whereas Minnesota Statute one-two-three-B point oh-two permits school boards to receive for the benefit of the district bequests, donations, or gifts for any proper purpose and apply the same to the purpose designated. In that behalf, the board may act as trustee of any trust created for the benefit of the district and for the benefit of pupils thereof. Therefore be it resolved by the Board of Columbia Heights Public Schools Independent School District Thirteen that the school board accepts with appreciation the contributions detailed in the background in the amount of eleven thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars and seventy-seven cents. For details, under monetary, a donation of seven hundred and fifty dollars was made to the Columbia Heights Public Schools by Financial One Credit Union for sake of food backpack program. The following donations were made to the Columbia Heights High School Scholarship Program. Steve and Jean Drew's, twenty dollars. Sherry Carr, twenty-five dollars. Robin Ashley Santos, fifty dollars. John and Lori Mullen, fifty dollars. Carolyn Wolford, fifty dollars. NIUM Technology Solutions, Inc., six thousand, four hundred dollars. And Jane Leopold, one thousand dollars. For value and kind, donation of coats, hats, and glove to Valley View Elementary from David Dejournette, estimated value of six hundred and ten dollars. Donations of school supplies to Valley View Elementary from Mark Emme, estimated at one thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars. Donation of iTunes gift cards to North Park Elementary from Ron and Nancy Wright, estimated at three hundred dollars. Donation of mitten sets to Valley View Elementary from Saint Phillips Church Mitten and Hat Makers, estimated value of sixty-four dollars. Donations of stocking caps to Highland Elementary from Sharon Anay, estimated value of fifty dollars. Donation of winter clothing to Highland Elementary from Amanda Peterson, estimated value of a hundred and forty dollars. Donation of hats, scarves, and mittens to Valley View Elementary from Oak Hill Baptist, estimated value a hundred and twenty-five dollars. And a donation of books to North Park Elementary from Michelle Wormer Skirsion? Thank you. Estimated value of two hundred and forty-six dollars and seventy-seven cents. A motion for adoption, the foregoing resolution was duly, was, I guess, was moved forward by, was Lori correct? And seconded by Laura? So, well, I'm sorry, you're right. Can I stand corrected? Ted made the motion and Lori seconded it. Thank you. And at this point, I think we need a roll call to accept this. So Lori?
Palmer?
Aye.
Larkin?
Aye.
Landworth?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Nichols?
Aye.
Meyer?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda is discussion reports, information items. Reports from the board members. Board members will report on board activities since the last regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Education. Molly?
On January fourteenth, I attended the Phase Two Training from MSBA, and also on the fifteenth and sixteenth was down at the convention for MSB as well, MSBA as well. In addition, I've been to some of the boys and girls varsity JV and freshman basketball games.
Lori?
Let's see, I was also at the MSBA Leadership Conference on the fifteenth, and really enjoyed the keynote speaker. I'm sure people have plenty of comments, but I guess the one thing that I kinda took away, he was very inspirational, and the one phrase I guess I took away was his "hook 'em and cook 'em" as far as hook 'em with technology and bring 'em in and let's, and then educate 'em and get creative and, and teach them after we've hooked them with the technologies. So, that kinda just stuck out. And then I attended a couple workshops while I was there, one on the board and superintendent relationships, and then another one on changing labor laws, which reviewed some of the legislative changes to labor laws that affect school districts from the last year's session. And I was at the work study last week, and I think that concludes my report.
Thank you. Ted?
I also attended the annual leadership conference. For those who don't know, MSBA is Minnesota School Board Association, and they have an annual conference every year. One of the benefits of our district being part of MSBA is we get to attend for free. It doesn't cost our district any, our directors anything, so it's good to take advantage of that. I attended a session on sleds, which is a longitudinal study of data gathering by the state on where graduates are going, what leads to graduation, just all kinds of data that can help school districts better plan for achieving their goals. So, there's a lot of potential there, and it's, it's, it's really, I went two years ago, and it's really developed since then, and a lot of, lot of potential on, on making that data more accessible to the public as well. And then I went to a school finance session by Tom Mel, Dr. Tom Melter, who is the guru of school finance for Minnesota, and it's, it's always interesting to, try to understand of school finance, which is a very complicated area. And then I went to a session by the Centennial School District on public relations for school, their school district, and what they've done, and got some great ideas. I'd love to share those with our, our administration. And then also attended a session on the National School Board Association's resources for promoting districts, and they also have a whole, whole raft of solu, of tool, tools to promote districts and, that we can tie into as, as, as well as, since we're members of the National School Board Association. And then I was off at the work study.
Okay, thank you. Grant?
I attended the MSBA Phase Two Training downtown, and I went to the robotics tourney, I guess it would be. It was pretty cool. Tell me the Columbia Academy, a lot of parents there. I also had a tour of the high school last Friday, and got to see some cool things with some teachers in the arts department, and I guess they got some awards that are coming up. And it'll be showing at February third through the twenty-first at the Regis Center of Art for the U of M, and the awards ceremony is February twenty-first at the Weisman Art Museum. So, people should go check that out. Some really cool stuff that the kids did. That's it.
Okay, thanks, Grant. Lori?
Well, I also attended the annual leadership conference, and as always, the guest speakers are always incredibly outstanding. You just come away from it feeling encouraged with the, with the future that we had, and the thing that I took away from that is, one of the things that the gentleman was talking about is, we gotta do a really good job on educating these kids because they are going to be us. And they're going to be the person that, that attends you when you have an emergency and takes care of you, and I, I, he was, he was absolutely amazing, very, very awesome to, to hear. I also attended a couple of workshops. One was on the new GASB rules, and how that's gonna be reported down to the districts, and I'm sure we're gonna be getting a lot more updates on, on how that's going to transpire because it's, it's something we're gonna be showing on our books. It's always been shown at the state level for unfunded line, or unfunded or underfunded liabilities with regards to pensions and so on, but now it's actually gonna be transferred down to the school district even though we actually have no control over it. That's all legislative. The legislative branch sets the, the, the contributions, sets the, sets everything, the disbursements. We actually have nothing to do with it, but, I mean, we can't do anything about it, but it's gonna still be shown on our books, so that's gonna be kind of interesting to see when that ha, all happens. I also attended a workshop also on the, the High School League's new policy, new transgender policy, which I, I got some really incredibly good information from that, and I do have more passouts for it. I don't know if I got everybody a passout from the, the, that particular seminar, but I'm hoping we can maybe discuss that in the future. I also had a wonderful meeting with Principal Ford over at Columbia Academy, and we spent a good hour basically talking about the future and things that are going on, and it was a wonderful meeting, and I do appreciate his time. It was, it really was a wonder, wonderful way to, to spend the afternoon. And then, of course, I attended the work session.
Okay, thanks. I also attended the MSBA conference. Couple highlights from that, I, I thought that the speaker was really good as well. He reinforced some things that I think that we're doing here with our Twenty-First Century Learning and being proactive with technology, which, you know, and he talked about even, you know, phones in the classrooms used appropriately, things like that, that, you know, there's, there's that struggle that, that people go back and forth with, but just technology in general and the direction I think that, that we're headed as a district, it was, I, I took that as encouraging. Couple of the, just briefly mentioned a couple of the workshops that I attended. One was Precious Status, which was a, it's an app that allows you to interact with parents. It keeps people up to date on what their kids are doing. Thought that was interesting, and then I sat through and listened to Robbinsdale School District talk about a continuum of parent, parent and community involvement. They talked about where they've been, where they're at, where they're trying to get to as far as that parenting engagement piece, so not enough time in that workshop to really, I think, expand on what would've been nice to hear with, from them, but then the work session and had an opportunity to meet with Superintendent Kelly. Thank you for your time. That's all I've got. Moving on would be the superintendents' report.
Mr. Chair, members, I attended the District Management Council Superintendent Strategies Summit, which is focusing on academic return on investment, which we've been talking about for about two years. And they fleshed it out a little bit more from the standpoint of getting the most from school district budgets and how to leverage both time and staff within those budgets in addition to academic return on investment. And Ms. Dr., well Nate Robinson, who I think some of you've heard, you've heard him at nine sixteen for District Management, has a book called Spending Money Wisely, and I believe, John's ordered it, and I believe we'll be starting to look at that at the director level, and then probably the principal level by August when we do our retreat, so we're gonna be, that'll be one of our books for, I think, next year. But first, I would like to get the take from the directors on it. We also had a District Management Council mini-conference around our process that, you know, we're going through on academic return on investment. All eleven school districts that are participating, well, nine of the eleven school districts who are participating are over at Capital View, and we were sharing where we were with our, with our process and getting feedback from the consultants on what to do next. We submit homework about every month, and then they grade it, and then they, we bring it back in and do the next round, but it's a great process because we really learn how to do it, and, and you get the feedback. And so, we have another assignment due here in early February, and our focus that we are looking at with this process is the Avid Program for starters, but we have a list of others that we will be doing next year when we have the process down more smoothly. We've looked at this somewhat with our Achieve Program last year, and we'll do a report out on that in upcoming sessions, but it's very, it's a very robust group, and there are three school districts that really are looking at their Avid Program, so we get feedback from one another on what characteristics of distinctions and critical attributes we should be measuring in that. And I wanna thank nine sixteen again because they actually had us pool all of our dollars so we could spend our money wisely and pay for one psychometrician rather than all of us trying to figure out how we were gonna do it in our own districts. She's gonna be coming out and visiting with us in February, and she'll spend her time through nine sixteen really looking at the metrics on the projects and making sure that we are on a true course with the programs that we're reviewing, so it's gonna be fun to meet her and talk about our project. I attended the Northeast Metro nine sixteen Superintendent Advisory Meeting, and there was a great deal of focus on facility planning, again, as Member Palmer always reminds us, there's a lot to do over there, and I did think Connie was being strategic in having all of us come over to Capital View for our meeting on District Management Council so we could see the great condition of that building. They presented on a licensure program to us that was interesting, and I think Member Palmer and I had a conversation about it, and it really was for Level Three and Level Four teachers, special education teachers. And what was intriguing to me about it is that we don't have any Level Four on-site, but they actually took educational assistants who had some interest in either, they were partially in a degree program or had interest in completing a degree program and created a cohort. And because it's a cohort through nine sixteen, the credits are, are cost appreciably less, and because they're all working on the same kinds of issues that the learning can be transferred directly into the classroom even as they're getting their degrees. They're thinking, that group will graduate in two thousand and sixteen after their student teaching is completed, and I talked to Director Hollaby because we do have Level Three teachers in the district, and special education teachers are always hard to find, and so she's going to pursue with Dan Nadez, who is their director, to see if, if we could possibly get one or two EAs if they wanted to into the next cohort. So, I thought, I thought you might smile at that. And then, of course, then the superintendents were sharing on their district management projects based on what the superintendents are thinking about doing this year and next year. So, a lot of support from nine sixteen and very happy with our membership with them in those areas. I met this week with Teachers Local Seven Ten President Carl Lightbody for our monthly meeting, and that was in preparation for our meet and confer meeting next week, the Licensed Labor Management. I attended a WMEP Superintendent Safe Landing Subcommittee, that's one of the ones I'm on for nine sixteen, and it was, if there is a possible conveyance, what's going to be the safe landing for students, for staff, both licensed and non-licensed, for administrators? What's gonna be the communications plan for the parents? And Director Lindsay Bennett is going to be going to meet with the HR folks as well because we wanna make sure that everybody feels like if this takes place, they have a safe and soft landing and know exactly what their rights are. And so, that is better to be preemptive and prepared than surprised and reactive, so that's what's going on there. I did meet with both Chair Larkin and Vice Chair Ted Landworth for agenda planning, and I wanna thank them for their time. And I did have a pre-staffing meeting today with directors and the principals to begin planning for the two thousand and fifteen, sixteen school year. Concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. Moving on, next on the agenda would be board, board policies, the first reading. Generally, what we'll do is we'll read what it is, and they'll be coming back at a, at a later date for a second reading. The policies for first reading tonight are number two oh five, which is open meetings and closed meetings, number two oh six, which is public participa, participation in school board meetings, complaints about persons at school board meetings, and data privacy considerations, and two oh eight, which is the development, adoption, and implementation of policies. These policies will appear on a future agenda for approval. Any comments on any of those policies tonight?
Guess I would just, just make the comment, we went over these at the work, in the work study session as a, as a board, and most of the changes, I think all of the changes are just additional law that has been adopted in rulemaking, so just for the public's awareness of that.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, move on to our action items. First one is the discontinuance of programs and positions. The school board will be asked to approve the adoption of a resolution directing the superintendent and administration to consider the discontinuance of programs and positions to effectuate economies and efficiencies in the school district and reduce expenditures. Tonight, we have Lindsay Bennett and Bill Holmgren. Welcome.
Welcome. Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. Bill and I were here last week at the work session, and we did discuss this resolution. It does begin the staffing process. It's an annual resolution that we do bring forward to the board, and it does direct the superintendent administration to consider the discontinuance of programs and positions, curtailment of programs or positions, to effectuate economies and efficiencies in the school district and reduce expenditures as necessary. So, tonight, we're seeking approval of this resolution.
And I would read this, and then we'll ask for a motion. Board of Education Resolution Directing the Administration to Make Recommendations for Reductions in Programs and Positions and Reasons Therefore. Whereas there may be a reduction in school finances, and whereas this reduction in expenditures in school finances may include discontinuance of positions and discontinuance or curtailment of programs, and whereas a determination must be made as to which teachers, contracts, and programs must be terminated and not renewed, and which teachers may be placed on unrequested leave of absence without pay or fringe benefits in affecting discontinuance of positions and programs. Now therefore be resolved that the School Board of Independent School District Number Thirteen, Columbia Heights hereby directs the Superintendent of Schools and Administration to consider the discontinuance of programs or positions to effectuate economies and efficiencies in the school district and reduce expenditures as necessary, and as a result of reduction in school finances, make recommendations to the school board for the discontinuance of programs, curtailment of programs, discontinuance of positions, or curtail, curtailment of positions. Can I get a motion to move this forward?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ted, second by Laura. Any discussion?
Chair, Larkin, I just have one, and I just wanted noted that we have modified the resolution to reflect better congruency with our constitution as Member Landworth suggested, and so we will have that now and in the future, so it's in there. I just wanted to make sure you know the change had been made.
Okay, thank you. Ted?
I guess I could just span, expand on that. Thank you. The, the Minnesota Constitution does require for an efficient system of public education, so that's, you know, I take that to heart, and we've all pledged to uphold the Constitution, so thank you.
Any other comments or discussion? Okay, here ain't none. Lori, would you call the roll, please?
Larkin?
Aye.
Landworth?
Aye.
Meyer?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Nichols?
Aye.
Palmer?
Aye.
Passes. Thank you. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Next in the action items is the West Metro Education Program, WMEP Resolution for Conveyance of Schools. The board will be asked to, to approve a resolution for WMEP for the conveyance of schools, and Superintendent Kelly and Bill Holmgren will be presenting.
Chair Larkin and members, this is a resolution that we have looked at at the work study session. It is a resolution to support the concept of conveying the two WMEP fair schools, and it is something that we have been probably talking about in the vision of where WMEP is going for the last year to, in the last year, more, more specifically in the last six months as it relates to the schools. And so, I, I, Bill will once again reiterate the finances on it, but we've talked about it a lot, and so as long, if there are no other questions, we are not, we don't, we're not prepared with a presentation tonight, other than Bill might say a few words on finance, because we feel like it's been discussed on TV, but if you do have additional questions, we would be happy to answer them. Bill, did you have anything to say?
Well, I guess, yeah, just, just to quickly reiterate what we talked about last week. When we look at WMEP and going forward with the organization works at right now and the way that they are running the schools, we know that if it stays the same, that there's more expenses coming to the school districts, and just to reiterate that we really don't have any more general fund money to put into that program. We would have to make cuts ourself in order to make those, make that program continue.
Okay. What I'd like to do is read the resolution, the motions, get it opened up, and then there's discussion. Resolution for Conveyance of Schools with the West Metro Education Program, whereas the West Metro Education Program under a joint powers agreement has operated the fair schools on two campuses in Minneapolis and Robbins, and Robbinsdale since nineteen ninety-five, and whereas the schools are founded as inter-district magnet schools to provide integrated educational opportunities for students from Minneapolis and, and certain of its suburbs, as well as to provide a laboratory for education strategies, and whereas there have been significant changes in the operation, operating landscape since the schools opened, including demographic changes in the member districts, financial constraints, open enrollment, and the state's new achievement and integration law, and whereas these changes raise, raise questions whether WMEP is the appropriate entity to be operating the fair schools, and whereas the undersigned, WMEP board member believes that the purpose of the schools could be best achieved if WMEP end its operation of the schools and works with Minneapolis and Robbinsdale to have those districts operate inter-district integration magnet schools at the two sites, and whereas Minneapolis Public Schools and the Robbinsdale Area Schools are prepared to assume responsibility for the schools and intend to operate the schools as inter-district integration magnet schools. Now therefore, the undersigned Board of Education recommends to the Joint Powers Board that WMEP cease to operate the fair school and work to transfer ownership of the buildings in Crystal to Robbinsdale Area Schools, and the building in Minneapolis to Minneapolis Public Schools, and for those districts to operate the schools as inter-district integration magnet schools. Can I get a motion to move that forward?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Molly, second by Ted. Discussion. Discussion.
Comment. I, and what I understand here is that we made a commitment to the students that are currently attending these two schools that they will continue to attend. And anybody in the district that would like to, would have to open enroll from the point forward if these schools are conveyed. Do I have that correct?
Yes, you do, that's correct.
And then another question that they would probably ask is how would they get there? And because it would be a desegregation integration magnet, the state would pay for the busing for them to go.
Comments or discussion? Ted?
There's been two options discussed and I, I think I, I mentioned it, the other option at our work study. I've got, received some additional information as well as Superintendent Kelly on. The other option was having Robbinsdale manage the, the two schools and the schools would still be owned by WMEP. And the thinking behind that was so that WMEP could still control what happens at the schools because there's been a large amount of concern by the parents that the schools continue as arts integration schools. And they don't lose that, that flavor and that character. And, and I'm sympathetic to that as well. And, and, but I've since, with further discussions with the, the WMEP Board and with Superintendent Lester, I'm convinced that it would be very hard for Minneapolis and Robbinsdale to change the character of those schools given the, the strong outcry and recommendations of the member district. Not that they couldn't. And at some point, I'd like to see us pass a resolution that asks for the state to, asks WMEP to, or recommends that WMEP ask the state for legislation to guarantee those schools continue in the way they're as arts integration magnet schools. I think that would be the, the most sure way to affect that they continue the way they're, they're, they are being operated. And I don't think anyone on the, the Joint Powers Board wants to see a change. They're, all the directors seem to be sympathetic to continuing, that's what the soft landing is supposed to be all about. The, the Robbinsdale Management Solution is not really a solution at all, it turns out. We found out that to manage those schools, Robbinsdale would charge four hundred and fifty thousand dollars approximately more than what WMEP is spending now to manage those schools or to, to run the schools. So, it would not solve the, the budget concerns, it would not solve the, the, the chance that we, or the likelihood that WMEP would send us a bill for the capital improvements that are needed for the buildings. So, we've, I, I wanted to let you know that, that avenue has been explored. It doesn't seem like it's a, it's not a workable solution. So, the only other solution that is out there now through the, the Joint Powers Board is this one, is to convey the schools with the understanding that they'll continue the way they are.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? Lori, would you call the roll?
Landworth?
Aye.
Meyer?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Nichols?
Aye.
Palmer?
Aye.
Larkin?
Aye. Passes. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Bill.
And next would be Board Topics. Anyone have any Board Topics for this evening?
Remember, we've got conferences coming up, so. I believe that's the beginning of February. I know I'm already starting to get notices about when I need to go in for conferences. So, make sure, make sure you get that time set aside to go in and talk to your, your kids' teachers and see the, see what's going on over at the schools. And just, you know, remind everybody, it always feels like it sneaks up on me.
It just did on me. It just did on me, I didn't know they were coming up. Anybody else? Ted?
I just wanted to mention the Sun Focus Reader's Choice Awards came out and the Highlanders did very, very well. So, North Park PTA was the best PTA. Jeff Sa- Principal Jeff Sosik is the best principal. Columbia Heights Public School is the best place to work according to the Reader's Choice. And ECFE pre-K programs got the best award as well, so kudos to everybody.
Excellent.
Looked the Oscars, awesome.
I think there was just something, just recently in the news, Principal Ford spoke about the closing the Achievement Gap.
Today?
Today that was, and who was he talking to?
He was talking to the, I think it was the House Education, he came, he went down. It was requested by the Minnesota Business Partnership to come down and to be with a number of schools that have been, have closed the Achievement Gap to talk about how we're doing it in Columbia Heights, so it was quite an honor. It also got him out of the staffing meeting this afternoon.
I think if you go to the district website, you'll see there's something about that.
Great spokesperson there.
Okay, anything else?
I believe this Friday evening is the youth night at the, the girls varsity plays at five thirty and boys varsity's at seven, Booster Club.
Is it for, one, they usually have a school that's, and I want to say it's Columbia Academy, but no?
I think it's all this year, I'm pretty sure.
Okay.
I think you might be right.
Yeah.
I think it is, it's all the elementary.
Flyer.
Is it down in the lunchroom, right?
Yeah, and it's kind of an unusual combination, the girls playing before the boys.
Yep, I saw that.
It's both teams.
Yeah. This Friday.
Anything else? All right, if there's nothing else, we'll close this meeting at seven thirty-seven.